Good evening and welcome to the Brockton School Committee meeting. Today is Tuesday, August 23rd, and the time is 7:05 PM. I'd like to call the meeting to order. And if you can just join me as we salute the flag. Thank you. Ms. Cunningham, do we have any hearing of visitors?
No, there were none.
Okay, no hearing of visitors. So I am going to establish a quorum, so we will take a roll call. Mr. Rodriguez.
Here.
Mrs. Mendez.
Here.
Mr. Homer.
Here.
Mrs. Judy Sullivan.
Mr. Tim Sullivan.
Yeah.
And the vice chair is present. So Mayor Sullivan was unable to attend the meeting tonight. He had a previous commitment, so I just wanted to make that noted. All right. So on the consent agenda, does anyone want to remove anything off of the consent agenda?
Motion to approve consent agenda.
Do we have a second?
Second.
So motion's been made by Mrs. Sullivan, and it's been seconded by Mr. Homer. So I'm just going to read the consent agenda, just so we have it for the record. So items A through E are the, okay, here we go. Approval of minutes for July 26th for the special school committee meeting. Item B is approval of minutes for July 19th, regular school committee meeting. Item C is approval of minutes for the May 17th, regular school committee meeting. Item D is approval of minutes for the May 3rd, regular school committee meeting. Item E is approval of minutes for the April 5th, regular school committee meeting. And item F is acceptance of notifications, personnel actions, leaves of absence, and resignations, and retirements. So those are all entered? Okay. So do we have the report of the superintendent?
All in favor.
Oh, all in favor to accept those? It's unanimous. I apologize, it's a little bright over here. It's kind of throwing me off tonight. So we have the report of the superintendent?
Thank you, Ms. Azak. First, I'm going to start with a couple of introductions. So if Dr. Karen Spalding and Sean Precious can come to the podium, please, to my left. So I'll start with Karen. So Dr. Karen Spalding is the new Assistant Superintendent of Teaching and Learning, K-5. As you know, we all met Karen last year as she came new to our district from Milton. She was the Director of Evaluation, Hiring, and Supervision, and now she's been promoted to the Assistant Superintendent. So Karen, thank you for being here, and it's great having you with us. So I just wanted you to say hello and talk about, a little bit about, the work that's been going on the last few weeks, getting ready for the school year.
Sure. So first, I want to say thank you for this incredible opportunity. I said this yesterday at a meeting, and I'm going to say it again. This, all of this, is exactly what those of us who went into urban education dreamed about and fantasized about, about having amazing, dedicated people, all in the right places. A superintendent who is relentless in his care for children and families. A school committee who is dedicated to all of those same things. And leaders who have incredible skill sets and experiences. And the analogy that keeps coming up in my head is when you go up that roller coaster, which I don't particularly love myself, but maybe others can connect to it. But when you go up that roller coaster, and you're at the top, and you're just about to go down for the thrill of your life, that's where we are right now. And that's what the energy feels like right now. And you can measure it, you can feel it, when you walk into any one of these rooms of meetings of leaders and planning sessions and all of the work that's been going on for the last couple of weeks especially, now that lots of folks are back. You can just really feel it. And I just want to thank you because this is what I, when I was 22 years old, graduating with my undergraduate degree, dreamed about being able to do. And it's just so exciting. I am honored to be here. We have lots of things that are cooking that we're really excited about. Definitely building up data systems, definitely building up relationships, connecting with families, connecting with each other. And again, I can't say it enough, the excitement and the enthusiasm and the motivation to do right by children is something I've never encountered before, all in one place. So thank you so much for this opportunity. I'm just so looking forward to the work ahead. Thank you.
Thank you, Karen. Next, we have Sean Precious, who's new to the district, who came to us from Chicago, is the new Assistant Superintendent of Accountability and School Improvement. So Sean, welcome.
Yeah, thank you, everyone. So this is like the fourth time today that Karen has stolen all the words that I was going to say right before me. No, but I just, obviously just echo everything that Karen just said. And I'm just incredibly excited, let me see if I can move this. Can you all? Okay, that's better. Just incredibly excited about this opportunity. So I met some of you back in April, when I first started interviewing with Brockton. And I was blown away by the commitment and the passion and the pride for this city of champions. And I've been working in larger systems most of my career and really wanted a place where we could accelerate learning and improvement for all students and wrap our arms around the community. And so it's a new role, very excited for that, and thank you for this opportunity. Going to be focused a lot on taking our five-year strategic plan and building out that action plan and making sure that we have data and monitoring and cycles of accountability every step of the way. So thank you again, and so excited to be here.
Thank you, Sean. Appreciate it. Next up, I'm going to have, oh, I thought you were coming back up for something else. Next, I'm going to bring up Deputy Superintendent of Teaching and Learning Sharon Wolder. Sharon's going to, who is obviously leading the area of teaching and learning. She's going to talk about the last couple of days, as you know, that all of our principals, building leaders, and district directors, most of our administrators started back last Thursday. And then our meetings with them started on Monday, yesterday, and continue today, and will continue for the next few days, as they also prepare to open schools. So thank you, Sharon.
I want to start by saying that the superintendent put together a powerful team of leaders who will take, when he talks to you about our proficiency commitment, you'll see why we are so excited about the work that we have ahead of us. And what we had to do, because most of us are new, well, actually, all of us are new in the positions that we're in. We know how to lead, we know how to work, but we had to start by figuring out how to work together. And how to work together with one purpose, and that is the purpose of improving conditions for kids in Brockton and improving outcomes for students in Brockton. And so the teams of leaders for the Teaching and Learning Department have come together. They started working together from the very beginning. The superintendent had a retreat for us so that we could do some team building and really put some focus on the work that we're doing. And from there, we started figuring out how to be better leaders for the district and how to support leaders in the district, the principals, assistants, associates, the directors, coordinators. And we put together a plan for how we were going to roll out the work that we needed to do for this district moving forward. And starting with, everyone comes back, and there's this rush. There's this rush of, we have to get furniture in place, we have to get people hired who aren't hired yet. And we have a bunch of meetings where we just throw information at people. And then we get into October, and we say, why don't we see it? Why don't we see it? And we realize, we can't expect to see something that we're throwing at people in a day right before they start putting their schools together for school. So we put together a calendar that allowed us to pool people as needed. Our first meeting was with the superintendent, all of us presenting to all of the administrators in the district, who, by the way, we have quite a few new ones. And so we were able to say, here's our mission as a district. Here's what we're doing together, and here's the expectations we have of each other and all of you. From there, we set up meetings, and you can see it from the calendar, I won't go through all of them. But we scheduled them so that it was based on the need or the role that the person plays in the district. In that way, we're not occupying everybody's time for a day or multiple days with a bunch of things that they don't need. We are really targeting the groups that we need to meet with and what we need to do with them, so that they feel supported, they feel empowered, they feel like they have clarity in what they're doing, and they can go out and move forward with the rest of their day without feeling like they had to block off a whole day. The civil rights training that we're doing tomorrow is for everyone. We really have to target that work, and so we'll have everyone back together for that. Today, we spent time with those people who are new to their roles in the district. And we invited people and said, come in. If you are a brand-new leader, if you are new to the district or new to a role, we welcome this time with you to create those affinity groups and to support the work that you're doing as new leaders. I was surprised that we had people who have been in their roles for three, four, or five years showing up, because they wanted to be there, because we've never provided that level of support for our leadership before. And part of what we want to make sure we're really deliberate in doing is making sure we're building the capacity of the people who are supposed to support the teachers in the schools, who are supporting our students in the schools. And the way to build that capacity is to give the space, to give those opportunities for learning and growth, and to hold them accountable in ways that we have not held each other accountable for in a very long time. And to do that, they need to know expectations, but they also need to feel supported. So that's been the work of the last few days and for the rest of the week. We're really excited about getting the school year started and getting in and seeing classes running and supporting our educators with so many new things we have going. You'll hear from us again in subcommittee meetings and at the school committee meeting every week or every meeting that you have with updates on all of the work that we're doing in teaching and learning to improve conditions for our students, and most importantly, to increase their outcomes. Back to you, Supra.
She's a little tied up. I just wanted to make a comment. So I've been working closely with Karen Spalding on a project, and between last week and this week, the amount of workshops and what you're providing is just phenomenal. And it looks like a lot of the staff is just absorbing whatever you're providing. And we're starting the new year, I mean, it just, I'm seeing so many changes, and it is exciting. And you hit it right on the button, right in the beginning. We have an exciting, amazing team. We've always had amazing staff, but this new leadership team is just, I'm excited to see where we're going to be, you know, by the end of the school year.
We are definitely committed to the improvements that we know we need to make. We are excited. We know we can do this work. And you hear it over and over from everybody coming to this microphone, we know we can do this work. And so we are excited about getting it done. And I put a few of the words that we ask people at the end of the meeting on Monday, how are you feeling? And just hearing back from the leaders that, honestly, excited, challenged, supported, all of the things that we were hoping people would say. We know we have a heavy lift, but we can do it.
We're excited for you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sharon. And next up, I-
Mr. Sullivan.
Oh, sorry, Mr. Sullivan.
Just one question, Sharon. The, I see on the news that there's teacher shortages, as well as bus driver shortages all throughout the country. Are we okay as far as teachers in the classroom?
So for anyone listening to this, we still have openings. If you are a licensed educator, an emergency licensed educator, please apply to the Brockton Public Schools. It's a phenomenal place to work. We do have some openings, but we are working diligently to get them filled so our students are not sitting in classes without a teacher.
Just one final question. Do you have the count for this year? Or is it finalized?
We will work with HR to bring that to you.
Okay.
Yeah, we'll have that for you on the first day of school. But we're not, we have openings, but we're not in dire straits like a lot of school districts are. But we, when we have our first meeting in September, Dr. Murray will have a list of openings.
The count of students?
Oh, the count of students? We will get that again on September 1st as well.
Okay.
Yep.
We are still enrolling and happy to say that a lot of our younger students are coming back to the system, so.
Good, that's good to hear.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mrs. Sullivan?
(inaudible) presentation? I just had it. It's so white.
Judy, just the microphone.
Could you just talk a little bit about what's presented in that portion? Sure. So every year, we are required to have all of our educators go through a civil rights training. We have to make sure that they understand what students' rights are under special education, 504, Title IX, desegregation, all of the things that are about the rights of students and making sure that people understand it. We also talk about mandated reporting. Because we are mandated reporters, there are certain things we have to do and make sure that we're doing on a consistent and regular basis. The importance of doing a training with everyone every year is to make sure, one, that we've covered it with them, giving them an opportunity to get back into that work mode and understand that we have to make sure we're protecting the rights of students. If someone is bullied or harassed, it has to be investigated. If there's a suspension, they have the right to due process. And so all of those things that we need to make sure that people are really clear about what the rights of students are, we cover all of that with all of our administrators. Our principals cover that on the first day with their faculty. In the past, we have used a PowerPoint so that it's a follow-up with people with more details, linking them to the law, to our policies, because our policies include all of those things. And making sure that they understand processes and where to find the forms and documents that they need if they need to report something. Thank you. That's something that we've always done. Absolutely, yes. Always have it all. Always. Okay, thank you very much.
Mrs. Mendez?
I have a follow-up question on Ms. Sullivan's question on civil rights and responsibility. If principals are required to give this training to their staff, what happens when you have staff that come in the middle of the year or towards the end of the year? And how do they receive this training?
And that's why we have, our principals cover it in the beginning, and we put together the PowerPoint self-paced training that everyone has to do. So if someone comes in later, they're expected to complete that training. It's not, you have to wait until next year. We have certain trainings that, when you come onboard and HR has that training, so when someone is hired, they're expected to complete that. And it requires a sign-off, so we have documentation of who has completed the training. And then if there are questions, the principal can follow up and make sure. We ask people to identify if there is an issue or a concern with something they don't understand, so we can follow up to make sure there's clarity on what has been covered. So we have some steps in place, so it's not just, if you missed it on the first day, you don't get it. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments?
Superintendent?
No, thank you, Sharon. Appreciate it.
All right, thank you as well.
Okay. Can I just remove? So on the agenda, we actually had the presentation of the superintendent's end-of-cycle evaluation. We, due to the scheduling conflict for the mayor, and then Mrs. Ayers is at a work event, so we are going to move that to September 20th. So we will have the evaluation review and presentation for the members then. So I just, I know it's in the agenda, I just wanted to make a notation that we are going to reschedule that for the 20th. Mrs. Sullivan?
Did we pass it in yet to Desi, though? Because that's due a certain date?
I'm working on that with Mrs. Spalding, so we're aware of that.
I think it was due by the end of June.
No, no, we have the deadline. We're going to meet the deadline, we're fine. We've done the calculations and stuff, but it just made more sense to wait. We were going to do it tonight, but it just made more sense to wait till the mayor's here and then one of the other members, to give them an opportunity for the presentation.
Of course, but I mean, I did not want to miss the date.
No, yeah, we haven't missed it.
I think we're still accountable to the date?
Yeah, I believe we checked on it, and I believe the date's October 1st, is it? Yes, we considered that for October 1st. Yeah.
Okay. As long as we're in under the date.
Yeah, no, we are, we are.
I don't have a problem with it. I just-
Yep, nope, we're on track.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you. All right, Superintendent, back to you.
Thank you. So I'm excited to be here tonight, because I'm going to introduce something that's very exciting. And as I start my 30th year with the Brockton Public Schools, and this is very exciting. So as you know, we had 250 people, including some of you, for a year and a half that helped build our new five-year strategic plan. And the thing about when you're somewhere for 30 years, like I've been, I've seen superintendents come and go, and a lot of you in education have seen strategic plans built and then left on a shelf to collect dust for the next three or five years, until the next superintendent comes in and they have to do a whole other new strategic plan. And then that sits on a shelf for the next three to five years. So then, when I'm introducing tonight, the superintendent's proficiency commitment is something that's going to make our five-year strategic plan come to life. I remember a parent that was here, and I wish I remembered her name. She was part, and a very active member of the strategic planning team. And she came up, and she was very committed to the work of helping build a new strategic plan. And she said something, and it stays with me. She said, you know what? Don't let all this work go for nothing. We had students, we had faculty, we had all staff members, our union president, administrators, school committee members, city councilors. We had community members. And what she said is true. You can't get all 250 people involved in building something to tell you what your school system should look like and how it's going to work for our students, and then just let it sit on a shelf. So the superintendent's proficiency commitment is what's going to make that strategic plan come alive, stay alive, stay on the front burner, and make our commitment what we need to make to our kids. As you know, our struggles are well documented through our last district review. I thanked the school committee especially for allowing me to build a team and put a structure in place that is going to help us be successful. But we need a commitment. And that commitment, my commitment and the district's commitment, is proficiency. So what do I mean by that? Uh-oh. Where am I? Oh, there I go. So at the end of five years, 90% of our students will be proficient in ELA and math. That's the commitment. Otherwise, why even have a strategic plan? What is our goal? Our goal is proficiency. 90% of our students will be proficient in ELA and math at the end of five years, which is the end of our five-year strategic plan. Now, how do you do this? First, you have to communicate it well, and this is the first place I'm starting, is obviously with you, the leaders of the school system. I'll be visiting the city council to talk to them about it and do the same presentation. We'll have parent workshops. I'll visit churches, community organizations, because it's not only us that has to believe this and commit to it, it's the entire city of Brockton. It's the, our community partners, it's the businesses, it's our students, and it's our families. So this is the commitment. This is what is going to make the strategic plan come to life. And part of this, and I say this, as you know me as a person, is how we work and treat people. How we treat each other. As leaders, how we treat the people that work for us. And as educators, all of us, how we treat our families and our students, and how they treat each other. That's part of this commitment, to make sure that everybody's treated fairly, everybody's respected, their voices are respected, and if people are struggling, we need to help support them. That's part of this commitment. How we, come on. Well, I clicked twice. All right, go. So how are we going to measure proficiency? We're going to, obviously, have to look at these results. The state always measures it with MCAS results, which in a lot of ways, again, we need a benchmark, we need something to shoot for, and that's how the state measures. But we need to measure kids beyond that, just beyond MCAS scores. We need other benchmarks, which are the assessments that we do throughout the year, common assessments that we do throughout the year. Students' performances in their classroom. We have to put stock in what our teachers do with our students every day. And if a student progresses from Monday to Friday, that has to be celebrated. That's part of proficiency. Seeing a student grow day to day to day, week to week, month to month. And it shows the commitment, not only of the district, but as, to the educator, but the educator to their students. So this is how we're going to make the strategic plan come to life. So two critical assumptions that we need to make. Obviously, our students can achieve at every grade level proficiency and graduate from high school, ready for college in career. Also, Brockton educators, as we know, are strong, they're creative, they love our children, and we have to figure out how to overcome obstacles and provide the instruction to get them there. So COVID, as you know, has set us back, has set a lot of children back, has set a lot of adults back. It's been a big struggle. There's been a lot of learning loss. But we can do this, because people work hard, we care about our kids, and the work the teachers and staff in the schools have done over the last two and a half years of COVID has been incredible under very difficult times. So how are we going to get it started? Well, it starts tonight, and it starts with your support as well. So it starts right here. The recruitment presentation, that's what I'm talking about now, and I will be going around again to all the different venues I spoke about, to have all hands on deck. We've already met with the administrators this week and introduced what the superintendent's proficiency commitment is and what the objectives are. The working group will be all of us. There'll be principals and key central office administrators. We'll be supported by a consultant, we're working with Dr. Jeff Howard. He leads the Efficacy Institute and used to be a former board member of the Board of Education in Massachusetts. I've got to know Jeff just over a short period of time, the last few months. He's an expert in supporting urban districts and urban educators. And he also, his commitment to closing the achievement gap for students. And we're thrilled to have his expertise working with us. So then we need the operational latitude. We have to adopt effective strategies to achieve the objective as guided by the strategic plan. So what Sean talked about earlier, the action planning that we have to do to support the strategic plan is important. Like, what do we need to do, and what steps do we need to put in place to make sure this is successful? And again, it's all about going back to our three focus areas, effective instruction, active reading and writing, and positive relationships. Those three focus areas, just because now there's a superintendent proficiency commitment doesn't mean the focus areas go away. Those help us reach proficiency. So important quote to keep and stay to keep with you. We exist to move children to proficiency. We will organize ourselves to do this. It's important to know, because we talk a lot, rightfully so, and we look at everything through an equity lens, to make sure that everybody's treated fairly. And what we've been saying, and the work that we're going to, we're going to drive by all of us, and Renee has done this well in her presentations, equity is proficiency. That's how you get students and equity for them, is through proficiency. And that is, we continue to stress, we continue to stress with our leaders, I'll stress it at the convocation, that equity is proficiency. Come on. So finally, we can do this. We've had the commitment in Brockton, as you know, from- We've had the commitment in Brockton, as you know, from top to bottom, from the school committee to holding me accountable, to our union presidents, Kim Gibson, to holding me accountable, to make sure we're doing everything we can to support our educators and all our union presidents. But the commitment of, as you heard Sharon talk about, the work that the assistant superintendents have done to prepare for this school year, I always, I'm proud of myself because I surround myself with people that are smarter than I am, and I've done that with a team of people that I work with. But our commitment to our students, we can't fail at this, because Brockton is the city of champions. Brockton kids have struggled, we have, obviously you know, a lot of our students have struggled in poverty, we have several students who are students with disabilities, English language learners, and sometimes we tend to feel sorry for them because of the challenges they have in life, but that is not doing them any favors. We need to challenge them, we need to support them, and we need to bring them to 90% proficiency by the end of five years in ELA in math, and that's equity. And we all have to support that, and I'm looking forward to doing this, kinda like, I've never run for office, but this is gonna be like a campaign, so I'm gonna be on the campaign trail before now and probably Thanksgiving with my team members and with you, really making sure that the community understands what this is all about, because they expect from me and you and the leaders of our school district and from everyone that works in the Brockton Public Schools, they expect this from us, they expect us to get their children to proficiency, at least 90% proficiency, otherwise, we're not doing our job. And in Brockton, we can do this because the way we support each other, the way the union supports us and we support them, and the way we support every staff member in the district, whether you are a custodian, a paraprofessional, an MTA, an administrative assistant, or an assistant superintendent, we all have to do this together. So, I'm not only gonna be pitching this to educators and doing a campaign trail, it's also gonna start with everyone that works in the district, including, again, custodians, administrative assistants, because their role, again, is important, and they need to know what this means. So, it takes all of us, and I go back to it's all hands on deck. Again, we can do this because we're tough, we care about our kids, and we have to do this for our kids. So, I can take any questions, but I appreciate your attention tonight. I'll sit back down, actually.
Thank you for the presentation, Mrs. Sullivan.
So, Superintendent Thomas, the proficiency report that you just presented, thank you for that.
You're welcome.
I thought that was a really good job.
Thank you.
That goes along with the strategic plan?
Yes.
Okay. So, then...
So, you know the strategic plan is...
Yes.
It's big?
Yes.
It's actually being used as a model...
Right.
Throughout the state?
I see.
Yeah, the Department of Ed is really impressed with the work we did on the strategic plan, and again, because of what went into it and how many people were involved, we also did it during COVID, so it started and it shut down, and then it took almost two years where usually it takes a year. It was a lot of work, I mean, you can ask anybody that was involved, and it was just... And so, again, what I said earlier, a strategic plan usually, and I've been through, I don't know, seven superintendents, and I've talked to people that, like Dr. Zakowitz, who consults across the country and has been in several different school districts and has seen strategic plans that just sit and sit, and again, they sit on a shelf and they collect dust, and I'm sure Cynthia and Jared know how these things work, and they just die out, and then another superintendent comes in and they have to build a new strategic plan. And the reason they fail is because they don't have something behind it like this, a proficiency commitment that makes it come alive, and through the action planning that we have to do, meaning that you can't bite off the whole strategic, that's why it's a five-year plan, you can't just say, "Okay, we're gonna do all these 95 different things in a year," but you bite off things that you can really move things on, and again, that's the three focused areas that oversee all of this, the effective instruction, active reading and writing, and positive relationships. And that's the one, and I stated the positive relationships on purpose because during COVID, people get frustrated, people have struggled, you know, either home life or work, it's been very difficult, but you can't forget how you should treat each other. And we have to get back to making sure that leaders are treating the people that work for them fairly and supporting them and not rushing to tell everybody something's wrong. You know, tell somebody, if something's going wrong, you tell them, but then you have to support them, how to make it right like we should be doing with the students. So, that's why I mentioned relationships is how important that is.
And then, when DCE does a district review of our district, they fall back on the strategic plan in a lot of their comments.
Yeah, so when they come back to do another district review, which could be two years from now, three years from now, they will, because one thing, DCE, which we meet with often, Sharon and I meet with them every other Monday, we met with them yesterday, nine of them yesterday, the team that supports Brockton, and they met with all the assistant superintendents and myself. One thing they've mentioned over and over again for the last two years, and rightfully so, is the strategic plan, and, you know, they wanna make sure that, obviously, it was done right, which was part of our MOU, and that was done right, they really laud the strategic plan, and they wanna make sure that we're doing, we're following it, and it is the blueprint to improve the district.
Right, and also, when DCE does come in, they meet with, you know, staff, teachers, school committee, they ask school committee questions, and if we don't refer back to this when we're speaking with DCE about the district review, just so school committee members know, we got cited on not answering questions on the district, the strategic plan on the last report. So, it is important that school committee members know what the strategic plan is, and when DCE does come in to question us, that we refer back to the plan and quote, what kind of work we've done on that strategic plan to help the superintendent, because we are, our responsibility as a school committee member is to work with the superintendent, and he leads a district we kinda support, we support him, hopefully.
Yeah, and I think it's important for you all that have jobs and lives, and, you know, that's why I think this commitment's important, because it comes alive for you as well, because, you know, you don't have all day to go through the whole strategic plan and see every inch of it and making sure it's going on, and you rely on me to make sure my team is doing that. But it also, this commitment to proficiency helps you keep the strategic plan alive, and because, again, you have other things going on, and it just helps keep it in the forefront, and again, it's all focused on our students.
Right, and it's also important that everybody is on the same page, so that's why this is great.
Right.
And also, I feel that we have the educators and the administrators in this district to get this done.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
Thank you, Mrs. Mendez.
Yes. This is a very, I would say, optimistic and ideal goal. The only concern I have, it's very broad, so when you think about at the end of five years, 90% of our students will be proficient in ELA in math, the first thing I think is, what's gonna, year one look like, what's gonna year two, year three, year four, and then, because this just tells me at the end of year five. And then when we talk about equity, it's not just getting students to grade level, but making sure that they have access to the resources they need. So, how would that look like for a student in year one, that maybe the accommodations or the services they already have, it's not getting them to the benchmark we ideally would want them to? And then how, you know, like, that, obviously, we think about money, we think about, like, staffing, so just wondering, you know, have we thought about breaking down this goal?
Yeah, so that's what the action planning will do, so every meeting from here on out, you'll have a presentation by one or two assistant superintendents to talk to you about, for an example, we were cited for too many students with disabilities in subseparate settings, so that's an equity issue, that's an issue that students are not having full access to the curriculum when they're in subseparate settings. So, that's something we have to do right away to fix. When you talk about, you know, I just say, you know, ELA in math, if you get students to 90% proficiency in ELA in math, that, under that, obviously, is several different things you have to do. One of them is having the proper curriculum in place, the biggest thing is instruction, which will always be in the forefront, is how we use data to inform and improve instruction. And a student being able to reach 90% proficiency means that they've had full access to the curriculum, they've had a teacher that is effective and knows how to support them, they've had a building leader that knows how to make sure those students are supported not only academically, but socially and emotionally as well. So, if you read into the 90% proficiency, there's so much that goes into that, and it all equals equity. But you'll hear throughout every school committee meeting, there will be a presentation, and it will be, the strategic plan will be cited, each part of the strategic plan of what we're working on, and that will be every, like, you'll hear Jamie talk about the commitment and the changes we're making with the special education department, and how we're gonna get students out of subseparate classrooms, and how we evaluate students for special education. This district has done a poor job of, you know, a lot of times, we have students with behavior problems, and all of a sudden, we think, okay, they have a behavior problem, now they have to be evaluated for special ed. No, they have, I would have been in special ed when I was young because I was a behavior problem in school, so not every behavior problem means a student needs to be and have a disability, and we've kinda gone down that road too much, so again, another equity issue. English language learners now, the new launch program, where we're gonna move English language learners out of SEI classrooms quicker, we're gonna change the structure next year of our kindergarten SEI, Mr. Rodriguez has spoken about this, when he was in school and sent to across the city to go to another school, and he was born and raised here and spoke English, so that's another equity issue and changes we're making with the bilingual department. So, you'll hear these presentations throughout the year, but going back, you're right, you need to know what we're doing each year to make sure that we can get students there, and that's the action planning, that we have to, that's part of our MOU with DCE, that we have to lay out these action steps to them, I think by the end of October, of how we're gonna get students and how we're gonna achieve the strategic plan at the end of five years, which, again, this is not DCE's mandate saying that at the end of the five-year strategic plan, oh, 90% of your students are gonna be proficient in ELA in math. This is a bold thing to do for a superintendent to, you know, make a commitment to make sure our students are gonna be 90% proficient, but it's the right thing to do, it's, again, setting around equity, and it's something I think we can all get behind, not only if you're in education, but if you own a business in Brockton, or you just, you live here and you don't even, your kids are all grown up, or you don't have children, it's something that I think everybody can get behind.
I wanna say, though, as a parent, going through special ed evaluation for my own son, I think you mentioned here, particularly, like, you give credit, a lot of credit to our educators, which they deserve all the credit, but you said that they are intelligent, creative, and love our children enough, that part about love our children, I really think it matters how we talk about our children, and the reason why I said that is because when my son was being evaluated as a mother, I went in and I was like, "Yeah, he's just so demanding, like, there's just this," you know, and they switched the language for me, they said, "No, your son's strong-willed." And I think just that switch of language, not just for the parents or the caregivers, but also how we think about our students and how we switch language, how we direct to them, how we talk about them, definitely, like, would contribute more to internalizing this goal of 90%. When you talk about special ed and working towards the evaluation of our substudent, of subseparate students being in their least restricted environment, one big concern that I've had a lot about constituents is the location they're in, right? So, a facility question, and like, what spaces are they're in, and like, how can we make those spaces more safe, more comfortable, because that's gonna, that contributes to how students respond and how teachers respond, educators, and their safety as well. So, yes, I do wanna thank you for this commitment, because how, as you mentioned, this is not something that's required of you, but something that you and, obviously, the team and the district is believing, and I would, I'm looking forward especially for the updates and how these action plans go forward.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other members with any questions or statements? Mr. Homer.
Thank you, I just wanted to thank you for including in the benchmark discussion, you mentioned, you know, the weekly progress that the kids are making, and I think, I was thinking about that in terms of, I think that's really what's gonna drive success for the kids, is when we celebrate those successes, and if the kids can see that they're making the progress, you know, it's something that I think the teachers will subtly be able to do and bring them toward progress, and it is an ambitious goal, I think it'll take time to do that, but I think biting it off week by week, maybe, one assignment at a time, one project at a time, is what's gonna get us there, and I think...
Absolutely.
The writing across the curriculum is gonna be instrumental in that, and I think the kids are already used to that, I know my three kids are definitely gonna be experiencing that at all different levels, and I think as they move into a new school year and kids moving into new school buildings and new levels and new programs, I think just having that leadership from their teachers, just kinda guiding them through the process and just celebrating that each week, I think it's the positivity and the celebrating, the success is what's gonna bring that mindset and help us achieve the goal. Thank you.
And I think that goes back, Mr. Homer, to how we treat each other, I think it's important for our leaders to make sure they celebrate the educators in the classroom, that's why it's important not just to put MCAS scores as one of the measuring benchmarks, it's about what teachers do every day. I mean, you know, the little wins they have, like, the student, one student they're working with that, you know, has checked out for a month, and then all of a sudden, the teacher reaches them the next month, and their grades start to go up, and their attendance is better, and that has to be celebrated as well, it just can't be test scores, an assessment, it has to be what teachers do in the classroom every day, that a lot of, not a lot of people notice of what they do to change a kid's life from day to day, week to week, and those kinda things have to be celebrated, and it's part of this. So, thank you.
Thank you, Superintendent. Any other members with questions? Mr. Sullivan?
Yes. Mike, thank you for the presentation, it was really informative. I just had one follow-up, along with Cynthia's idea of, what percent are we at now? I know you want 90% in five years, but what is it right now?
Right now, I think we're at 17%, 17%. Yep.
You have a long way to go.
That's why DCE's with us often, so that's why it's bold, it's important, and we owe it, we owe it to our students, we owe it to their families, that's what I owed them as superintendent, and that's what we all owe as educators, and again, we can do this, but we have to make sure, again, we're building strong relationships, like what Cynthia just said, you know, how we talk to students, how we, you know, how we talk to families, that's important, it's all part of this, that's why relationships are so important, is that you can't label students and put a label on them early and then say the same things to parents, because it's just, it's just not the right thing to do, and I think, again, we have to make sure that you build relationships with parents and you reach them how you can reach them, and make sure that they understand and they're partners with us and us reaching this milestone.
It seems like a real tough goal, and it's, the right person's in that place right now. right now. I think you're the only one that could achieve that. From 17 to 90 in five years?
Yeah, it's, it's not gonna be me. It's gonna be, it's, again, it's the support of all of you. It's the, it's the team around me. It's most importantly, the, the people that work in the classrooms, from the teachers to the par- paras, to the MTAs who work with the kids every day. I just am lucky enough to lead it. But again, the great partnerships we have with our unions, and again, the support of the community is important, the support of you and the school committee. And I just think that it's, that's why it's such a bold commitment, because it, it says the superintendent's proficiency commitment, but it's more of the whole community's commitment to proficiency, because it's all of us that has to do it, because none of us can do it alone. And I just think it's, it will bring us all together.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other statements or questions? Thank you. Just a quick comment. I mean, honestly, teamwork. We're gonna, we're gonna get there together. Not one person's gonna be able to do this alone. And we have such an amazing, amazing group at BPS, and we're very fortunate, and we're here. We're here, we'll support it. And it's getting out in the community, getting out in the community, and, and just some of the points that you, some of the statements in here, just going back to the basics, it's how you treat, how you treat others. And, and kids see that right away, the kids and the parents. So another exciting-
Yes.
We have some exciting things going on at BPS. So thank you.
Thank you. And as, now I'm gonna bring up, I'm gonna bring up my glasses first.
Oh, you don't have the spotlight.
First, I'm gonna bring up Dr. Julianne Andrade to talk to us about the pre-K program and the grant we just received from the Department of Education. Julianne spent a lot of time, several hours, working on this grant, and it's exciting opportunity for us as we build our pre-K classrooms and start to expand pre-K.
Thank you. Good evening, Superintendent Thomas and school committee members. I'm Julianne Andrade. If you don't know me, I'm the coordinator of early childhood, and I'm here tonight to update you on the pre-K grant. Unfortunately, Dr. June Saban-McQuire can't be with us tonight, but I know she's watching from home. Before I talk about the grant, I want to revisit just a little bit of history with you about expanding pre-K here in Brockton. A few years ago, the school committee voted to change the entry date for kindergarten students from December 31st to August 31st for incoming K students. So in other words, we had four-year-old kindergarten students with us in September, and they didn't turn five until December. So over time, we changed that due to many different reasons, but particularly the standards that we were asking students to meet at that time. So that left us with a group of students that were born from September to December without a seat in kindergarten that year. So we opened pre-K classrooms to meet the needs of families, using a lottery system to begin with, because we only opened two classrooms. But over time, we've expanded our pre-K opportunities here at Brockton and opened more classrooms. Now we're looking to further expand preschool opportunities in Brockton with our community-based So what is the Commonwealth Preschool Planning Partnership Initiative? The CPPI grant is funded by the Massachusetts Department of Early Education and Care, and it's designed to explore and expand ways to increase access for three and four-year-olds in our community, and also to increase access to meet the diverse needs of families and to support children with disabilities. Brockton Public Schools will be the lead agency, however, as noted, this is a partnership grant, so we'll be working with other community-based providers. The purpose of this work is to develop solutions to address priority needs of Brockton's preschool-aged children and their family. So there's two different grants I'm gonna be talking to you about. First, one is the planning grant, which we did earlier this year. The second one is the implementation grant, that if we're awarded that, we can take everything we planned, including strategic development, and get that into place. So back in March, we were awarded the planning grant, and that was to conduct a needs assessment and to draft a strategic plan. This grant had two, two areas of focus. First, the first one was an expansion to access and quality preschool, and the second is equitable access to special education and inclusion. And why is this work important? It's important for us to understand the needs of families, programs, and children with disabilities. This work supports the development of a strategic plan and provides the basis for future funding for CPPI implementation grant. So as I previously mentioned, we had two tasks we had to do with the planning grant. We conducted a community-based needs assessment with families that had school-aged children that were young, from birth to about age three or four, and to develop a draft of a strategic plan. It was really funny, because when June and I were talking this morning, we went over the presentation together, and the poster up there that says, "Dream Big," and we are dreaming big. Our dream is to have equitable pre-K experiences for all three and four-year-olds in our And what else? We partnered with Linda Warren, who was part of the Early Childhood Associates, and they were really pivotal in conducting the needs assessments. We identified teams of leaders. We had a core leadership team, a larger leadership team, and a summit team, and they were diverse representatives and stakeholders from our community. Also, Joni Block, our coordinated family and community engagement coordinator, was a key team member with her vast experience with community-based organizations and services in our, in Brockton. The planning grant required us to form these teams. And we needed to form these teams and have diverse and connected groups of leaders and decision-makers. This was just not all educators. The leadership team provides grounding to the strategic plan. Next, we gathered data from multiple sources for the needs assessment. As you can see on the slide, we used existing data sources, we had family surveys that were online, we had program surveys and interviews. And just so you know, we had over 400 families respond to our survey. And in our next slide, I'm just going to show you a snippet of some of the information that we received on the needs assessment. So this is for strand one, which is for expansion. But if you look, families reported just under half of students attend an early childhood or childcare program in our community. 43% of all the programs had a waitlist, with Head Start having the largest waitlist of 283 families. About 73% of those families indicated need for full daycare Monday through Friday. And nearly half of all those families need more information to support their child, mainly locating resources and services. And so we conducted the needs assessment, we gathered that data, and then we held a At the summit, the team members looked at the needs assessment that we presented to them with, and they also worked together to create strategic actions. That's why it's so important that the summit met for the fact that this wasn't solely owned by Brockton Public School, this was really with our community-based members as well. And here, we had 33 people participate from our community, and here's a list of the organizations that were there at the summit. And I have to tell you, at the summit, there was great enthusiasm about this work, and people were really committed to working with us and really expanding these opportunities for families. So after we met with the summit, we took the needs assessment, we had people talk about problems and solutions, we came up with these four goals for a strategic plan. The first one is to develop a comprehensive approach to sharing information. The second was to expand access to high-quality, culturally competent, affordable education and care programs, strengthen public awareness of the importance of early childhood, and ensure children with disabilities get the services they need in inclusive settings without disrupting their schedules. So that was the planning grant, and we submitted that in June. Later in June, the implementation grant came out, so we needed to apply for that. Just so you know, we got strong feedback from the EEC about our planning grant and the thoroughness in which we conducted it. So here is, in summary, the tasks we've completed to date. We've done the needs assessment, we submitted an interim report to the EEC, we held a summit, we developed a strategic plan, we submitted that strategic plan to the EEC, and we have completed the CPPI implementation application that was due August 1st. So these are some of the next steps the grant was submitted. We used data from that planning grant in order to write the implementation grant. BPS is slated to be the lead agency, but we're going to partner with Head Start and with Brockton Day Nursery. And hopefully, we'll hear back from EEC about the approval in early September. So in conclusion, June and I feel very confident that we submitted a strong proposal, and we'll come back when we receive approval to come and talk with you in more detail about our plans for the future expansion of, of pre-K. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Julianne.
Thanks.
Thank you. Mrs. Sullivan?
Thank you very much. I just wanted to say, this is hard work, and I thank Dr. Andrade and Dr. Saban-McQuire for all the hard work on this. I know there were a lot of surveys for feedback to families, which is great.
Yeah, we were very pleased by the response from the community. There seems to be a really nice groundswell of families, community members, that really want to be part of this and create equitable opportunities, and it expands those for three and four-year-olds in our district. I just think about how important that will be in school readiness to have kids with us starting at age three. So even by the time they get to kindergarten, there could be, that they've had two years of preschool experience. I think that's a game changer.
Yes, and also, that's always been a really strong thing that Brockton Public Schools has done. I remember years ago, when Joseph Page was our superintendent, Superintendent Thomas?
Yes.
Joseph Page was our superintendent years ago. We tried to keep the kids, the four-year-olds, we tried to start them early for kindergarten so that we could get them earlier. And then, so this is gonna be great.
Kindergarten teachers-
Then we get them earlier and-
Right.
Yep.
Kindergarten teachers report to me that the kids that have been in the preschool classes come in with a sense of confidence, and they're really kind of like the leaders in that, that class, opposed to kids that haven't had preschool experiences before that.
So important for the kindergarten teachers, too, to have the kids ready.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other members with, Mrs. Mendez, and then Mr. Sullivan?
Yes. Thank you for the background. I remember when that, when that policy was passed, I was so against it, because my son actually turns four not today.
I know.
But then I understood the reason why behind it.
Right.
But in regards to the expansion, right now, you said we went from two classes to four classes. What's the hope of how many classes we would have?
Well, our hope, when we're talking about dreaming big, is to have what's called universal pre-K, which would be for three and four-year-olds, which means any family that would like to have their child in a full-day program, preschool program, would have that. Of course, we have to build that over time.
When you say any family, so how many, like, what would be the capacity ideally?
Well, the capacity would hopefully be, and like, I'm talking about the future.
Yeah, yeah.
Like, it takes, I know that other school districts, it's taken them, you know, many years to get to that point for universal. But universal meaning, again, that, that we would have the capacity, just like we have all the kindergarten students' slots. We would have, like, just enough slots for all the three-year-olds that, that their families wanted it. We'd have all the slots for four-year-olds.
Okay. And then, when you say full daycare, I know daycare hours are very different than school hours and then vacation as well.
Yep.
So can you define that a little bit more?
Sure. And what families were talking about wasn't necessarily just full daycare, they were talking about before and after-school care, too. So right now, we don't have that provided for our preschool, but if we get this implementation grant, we're going to be able to work with Brockton Day Nursery for about 30 students that are pre-K students to get before and after-school care provided through this grant for those families.
Okay.
So issues of transportation, childcare, before and after-school, those were all really big needs. We have a lot of children in our community that are not in programs.
And then it sounds like the schedule will match the school schedule. When there's vaca-, like, when school has vacation-
Right.
This would all, this would also-
And those are all things that we want to work out, those are all issues of equity.
Yeah.
Just that we were able to open some of the preschool programs was a big step. And here we are, a few years later, we're opening eight additional classrooms this year across the district, plus we have the Barrett-Russell School that's been in place for many years with our special ed students there. So, but we want to keep integrating and keep expanding.
But the Barrett-Russell, the model students are still half a day?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep.
So I guess my big question is, especially for those that are watching, if there's eight classes now-
Yep.
That's, like, are those full? How do families sign up so they can get that opportunity? Is there a waiting list?
Right. It's my understanding right now, there's not a waiting list, and we have more than eight classrooms, because those are just the ones we're opening up this year. We have two other additional classrooms at the Arnoam. We have additional classrooms at the Hancock. The Arnoam was the first place we opened up our pre-K, our general ed pre-K. We also have classrooms at the Downey, the Brookfield-
George.
And the George. The George, we're opening four classrooms there.
Okay.
So I would suggest that parents, if they're interested, to call the, the Parent Information Center and be able to walk through the registration process there.
So it's not too late to do that?
No.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Mr. Sullivan?
Thank you for your presentation. It was great. And I just had one question on the full day and half-day pre-K. As far as the grant goes, you don't know right now if it's gonna be full day or half-day?
It would be full day. That's what we're, we're shooting for, is, is full-day classrooms. What we found out is when we originally opened the two at the Arnoam, we made them two half-days, so we had four sessions, like, we had two in the morning and two in the afternoon, but it was too hard for parents. It was just like they were dropping kids off and then picking them up. So ba-, based on parental feedback, we expanded it to full day. That's what we would be looking at.
Just one final, you seem to be real positive about September 1st, which is only right around the corner.
Right.
But do you already know now that it's gonna, or do you have to wait till September 1st?
We've received positive feedback from EEC about our application, and we're actually having a meeting shortly, and I'm hoping that we will get full funding if that's the case. We have a little bit of a planning period, like, we're not ready to lift this September 1st because we have to get things in place for that, but we're hoping at least for the wraparound childcare that would be part of the grant, we would start that immediately. Well, as soon as we could, as we get the grant in.
Thank you. A great idea. Thank you.
Oh, thank you.
Thank you. There definitely is a need, because I remember when we, we voted on that not too long ago, and having the full day does help a lot of working families out where their children are just too young.
Yep.
So they do need that extra help. So this is, you know, good luck. Fingers crossed. Looking forward to hearing next week.
Yep, absolutely.
Hopefully, we have some good news. I apologize, Mr. Rodriguez?
On, on the survey, I'm assuming that we worked with our bilingual department to, to reach our linguistics?
Yes, they were all translated.
Do you have, I mean, if you can get it to us some point in time, do you have the actual breakdown of the needs of the, you know, our bilingual district as far as what languages and the demographics of what the needs are, what the numbers were when they took the survey?
Sure. If we don't have that, we could break it down, but if you're interested, I have the needs assessment. I know that June and I met with- If we didn't, that data is still live, so we could break it down in certain ways. But the family surveys were all translated, and it was a drop-down list for the languages that parents could click right on and take the survey in their own language.
All right, thank you.
Perfect. And this grant, we met with the mayor back last, a couple months ago.
Yeah.
Because the city has to also be the lead.
Right.
As you can see, we partner with Head Start and Brockton Day Nursery. But if the grant, obviously, what the EEC is very conscious of is that they don't want the school, they don't want the school system taking all of this on and obviously putting the local daycares that have been in business, out of business. So that's why it's a partnership. And then, so you have to have the city sign off on being a partner with all the daycares in Brockton. That's what this grant actually is very detailed about, is that it can't just be the school system doing the, you know, the pre-K, and it's got to be in conjunction with the daycares across the city. And that's where the city side comes in.
And it would be a real partnership. The exciting part of this is that we've all been kind of like in our own little places and not necessarily pooling our resources or professional development. So if there's something that we're doing that's working really well in public schools that we can share with our community-based providers or vice versa. I mean, we want, they, people have things to share all along. And to try to build in that system where all kids that are coming eventually into Brockton Public Schools are having similar experiences. So people may choose, families may choose to keep their children in a private preschool. But if we can work with those private preschools to make sure when they come to us, they're all our children eventually.
Thank you.
I have a follow-up.
Mr. Rodriguez?
Turn my mic off. How is the pre-K going to be affected, you know, far as with our extended-day program when it comes to half-days specifically?
Right.
Where some parents have to drop their kids off and, you know, obviously, you know, pre-K is to make sure that they have enough time, you know, half-days now is very important. That's something that we need to look at to make sure that we are offering extended-day on half-days. I've received, I don't know if any of the members, but I've received numerous calls and emails about not having extended-day during the half-days.
And that actually is a licensing issue right now with extended-day. We are not licensed. It's a different license for young children for preschool. They have to go through a whole other process to do it. That's not meaning we're not willing to do it, we just can't provide it at this time. I would absolutely love that we can. And June and I are certainly exploring the possibility for that. But it is a licensing issue right now with the EEC. So, but thank you for bringing that up because that really informs our work as we're moving forward about, you know, issues of equity.
Thank you. Mrs. Mendez?
Transportation can't be provided for this age group, right?
Not yet, but that certainly was an issue that came up with the parents' survey.
And that's something that we can try and work and see what the EEC, like, allows us to be able to?
Well, we'll have to see for the funding that we get and what's allowed. But I mean, I think that's, an internal discussion around transportation is, too, is we expand over time. But transportation, as we know, and I'm not telling Superintendent Thomas anything he doesn't know, but I mean, there's layers of when buses go out to pick up kids, so it's challenging at certain times, but absolutely on our front burner.
Thanks. Thank you. Any other questions, comments? Mr. Sullivan?
Ms. Andre, on this partnership with the Head Start and Brockton Day?
Yep.
Is that with daycare centers as well, as those two?
Well, we're starting out right now with Brockton Day and Head Start with a limited partnership, but we hope to expand it over time and even with family childcare providers as well. We want to bring people into that community. So with Brockton Day Nursery, they're going to help us with wraparound with about 30 students in pre-K. With Head Start, we're actually going to hire a team, which is a special ed teacher, an OT teacher, and a PT teacher to provide services on-site for some students at Head Start. Right now, if a child has an IEP, they're transported, and they're not in Brockton Public Schools, they are transported to a Brockton Public School site to receive services, which can be very disruptive to the day. So we're trying to take these major pieces of the needs assessment and build in some equity around that.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions, comments? Thank you so much.
Thank you.
So next is any unfinished business. Oh, I'm sorry, that's your part.
It's items to refer to Subcommittee? That's your part.
Oh, items to refer to Subcommittee.
Do we have any items to refer to Subcommittee? I think we're good. Okay, so now, do we have any unfinished business? Fabulous. All right. And to new business, we have a couple of items here. So we have the discussion and potential vote for the EEC rate increase.
So I have Sue Cole here. She's, she was and currently kind of doing two jobs. She's the coordinator of Extended Day, but also has recently been appointed as the new assistant principal of North Middle School, so congratulations, Sue.
Thank you. Thank you, thank you. Thank you, thank you. I know. On that note, before we even get to business, I will say, for all the leaders here, it has been an amazing two days. Like, the team that you have overseeing us and getting us jump-started, it's been full of hope and excitement. So I can tell you, you're doing an amazing job. Do you want me to get right to business here?
Yes.
All right. So first, thank you for having me. I am happy to be here. More to the business side of things, and I'm excited to move forward to an assistant principal role. But we need to have an open discussion and kind of some dialogue about where we are at the EEC rates. As most of you probably already know, our pricing limitations has expired. In alignment with our contract, we do state that we will be charging our private-pay families the same rate as our families on subsidies. That is exciting. On subsidies, so.
Should call her out.
I know. That's okay. She doesn't like the business part either, yeah.
That's your theme song for the, for the presentation.
Yeah, I know, that's okay. But I think from my end, I think it's, obviously, I'm open to questions, but I think per the contract that BPS has currently signed and agreed to do, that is something that we did agree to do. And during COVID, we did have that waiver, an opportunity to give families and parents the benefit of COVID. And through that, just for your knowledge base, any family that was impacted by COVID and their child was sent home, had to be home, obviously, we're not charged, not charged parent fees throughout this entire time. But I'm open to any questions, comments, feedback that you have about how we handled it. It would be a 56 cent increase for the AM Care, and it would be a $1.18 increase for the PM Care.
So for those that have their agendas, it's under item number nine. So you'll see the current rate and then the proposed rate and then the difference.
Correct.
Broken down for you, if anyone has any questions.
So when was the last time we did the rate increase? Was it? 2020. I was going to say. July 1st of 2020. Last spring, April of '21, it was not approved.
Okay. I do remember, this came before us.
Yep.
Not too long, well, gosh, two years.
Yeah.
Yeah. Mrs. Sullivan?
April 21, Melissa Shepherd, my predecessor, went for you all that was here before her, and it was not approved through the school committee. So we did not take-
Oh, we didn't.
-the rate change increase. So we did not take the proposed 2% increase at that point, and so our rates stay the same. So technically, per the state, they see us as somewhat out of compliance because we agreed to do that, and we did not.
Yeah.
I think we held up because of COVID and so many people losing their, people losing their jobs.
Yeah, a lot of our families.
No, it gets to the point, if you continue to reject it, then they'll, will be in compliance, and then you have, the money has to go to the EEC, and we're really not allowed to take Chapter 70 money in supplement. So it's okay to do it like we did last year because it was such dire situation for people, but you cannot continue to, because it can't sustain, and then we'll be in violation with the EEC. And the district local budget can't pick up the difference.
Right. And that's also taken away from our regular budget, what we need for K to 12.
Yes.
And this happened during COVID?
Correct.
At the beginning, beginning part of COVID?
Right.
So I do remember, because we, yeah. Okay. Any other questions, Mrs. Sullivan? Okay. Any other questions from any of the members? Mr. Sullivan?
Just one, are these rates set by the state already?
They are. So we are not, we are not in compliance with our private-pay families currently, but our families that are on subsidies are set by the state, and the expectation of our contract is that they align.
So you need, what do you need, a motion to raise it?
We just need a motion to approve it. But once we're done, any other questions, comments? We're good? So we're going to vote on this tonight?
Yes.
So we're going to-
Well, if someone makes a motion, yes.
Yep. So if we can have a motion to approve the early education in childcare rate increase, and do you need it broken down, Ms. Cunningham? The different rates are?
You can say as presented.
As presented?
Yeah.
As presented under attachment number nine in our agenda?
Yes, we can.
Okay. Do we?
I'll make a motion.
Okay, Mr. Sullivan?
That the, that the school committee approves the early education for children, the EEC as proposed. The proposed rates are $9.95 all the way up to $42.11.
Second.
A motion's been made by Mr. Sullivan and seconded by Mrs. Sullivan. All in favor? That's unanimous.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
So the second item we have is discussion and potential vote regarding the Friday, oh, here we go. So regarding the Friday, September 2nd, school committee meeting, date changed to Wednesday, September 7th at 7:00 PM in the Little Theater. September 2nd is a Friday, and then we have elections that following Tuesday on the 6th. So we're requesting that we move our next meeting to September 7th, which is Wednesday, so we can go over. Usually, we have it, you know, right after school starts, but given it's a Friday, that we move it to the 7th. So if anyone has any questions or statements, otherwise, we'd be looking for a vote to have our next meeting, which would normally be on September 2nd, moved to September 7th at 7:00 PM.
Just one statement, if I could.
Sure.
Over the last 10 years, it has always been on the first day of school, and it seemed to work out fabulous. We found out the ins and outs of everything that happened that day.
Sure, it's a Friday.
I know it's a Friday.
Yeah, that's the only thing. So I know a few had mentioned that it's a Friday, so, you know, we, it's up for discussion, Mrs. Sullivan?
The thing I was thinking of is, you said that we're suggesting to change it, but I haven't heard anything about it till now, so I didn't know anything about it.
I think it was brought up at the last meeting.
Was that the last meeting?
Okay, I don't recall, so that's why I'm questioning it?
Yeah, I think it was afterwards, they realized that the election was on September 6th.
Okay, I know the election, but I don't, I didn't know we discussed first day of school.
It just came up afterwards, and this is our first meeting since the last meeting that we had, so this is the only opportunity we have.
Right, the members didn't know, so.
Well, it's in the agenda. That's why we're discussing it.
Right, but it wasn't before that, so.
Well, it came up from the superintendent's office, you know, it was brought to our attention. That's why it's on our agenda for us to discuss it tonight and see those that want to attend on a Friday or just move it to the following Wednesday. Miss-
That would mean that elections are on the Tuesday, and then we have a meeting on the Wednesday.
Correct.
About the first day of school.
Correct.
But the school would already be in session three days. The Friday, then the Tuesday and Wednesday, right? So three days, yeah.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Mrs. Mendez?
Personally, I appreciate it not being on a Friday. That was a concern I had when we first voted for personal reasons. Not sure if I can make a motion, but I'm ready to make the motion if there's no other comments.
Sure, once, if no one else has any comments or statements. I do, I do know it was, it's on our agenda for a reason because this is our opportunity to discuss it. It wasn't discussed behind the scenes, it was just brought to our attention that the first day of school is that Thursday, and then we have Friday to have a meeting that Friday night. You know, a lot of members have other commitments, other engagements that they already have in their schedules. So that's why it's before us tonight to discuss it and see. So we can take a vote, and it'll be whatever the vote is.
I also think they'll be good, like, I understand, like, the tradition, like, for 10 years that we've done the first day of school, but by the 7th, I also, the perspective of it being more informative, because now you have the first day of school, especially with our transportation, that was, and I don't know if glitch is the correct word, but there was a huge glitch last year. So I think it would be more informative to have three days of data, especially on transportation, versus one, just, just another perspective.
Mrs. Sullivan?
It has been actually more than 10 years that we've done it on the first day of school. So just for the record, so it really never was done any other day. So it was even, it was really, it's been done ever since I can remember. My kids are 33 and 28, so it was when they were in school, too. So it has always been on the first day of school. I can understand and be sensitive to people that can't come on a Friday night, though. So I would be willing to be understanding to that and change it. If there was a majority that couldn't make the Friday night, we wouldn't be able to meet anyway. So if that's being brought up as a concern, then there wouldn't be a meeting anyway if people can't make it. And I respect if people can't come on a Friday night, even though it was always done on the first day of school. It's just a lot of things seem to be changing how we always did it. So that's why I'm, I'm a proponent of the old traditions.
Yeah, I feel you. Change is hard.
As I'm old.
The world is definitely changing, let me tell you. Change is hard, but sometimes things change. Mr. Rodriguez?
Just to clarify, yeah, we did speak about this at the last meeting that we had, and sometimes tradition is meant to be changed. And a lot of the old ways, we're correcting because certain things weren't done. So it's a new body, so sometimes when we-
I would disagree with you, Mr. Rodriguez.
I'm speaking now, so.
They weren't done right.
Miss-
But change is good. So if somebody's going to make a motion, we can make a motion and move on from this because we have other business to conduct.
But I would also disagree that, that-
Okay. Mr. Rodriguez, are you all set?
I would disagree that it wasn't done right. I don't think that that's why it's being changed, that it wasn't done right. I don't agree with that statement.
I just want to make a statement, it's not coming from us. It was brought to our attention. So we also have people that present at the meetings, asking presenters to come on a Friday night. You know, it just, again, it's in the agenda, we're going to vote on it, and we'll go with whatever the majority approves. But, you know, it just, again, I think a couple of days of having school will give us a little more information. I know it's always been like that. Mrs. Sullivan? But, you know, it just, again, I think a couple of days of having school will give us a little more information. I know it's always been like that. Mrs. Sullivan?
I would just wanted to ask Superintendent Thomas, would you be in favor of changing it off the Friday, off the first day of school?
Off a Friday, yeah. It's unusual that school's on a Friday the first day. You know, people complain, and why is you doing it on Friday? But we looked at the calendar and the way we had to cancel days, and I'm just, we're trying to just make sure we get off and running without, last year, we had to cancel three days in October because of no power. And, you know, we ended up in school until, most schools until the 28th. Once, Brockton High to the 30th, Brookfield to the 29th. So again, you know, just trying to save some days and, again, so I would recommend that we don't do it on a Friday. Fridays are tough.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
So any other statements, questions? Mrs. Mendez, I think you were going to make a motion?
Motion to change the Friday, September 2nd, 2022, school committee meeting to Wednesday, September 7th, 2022. And that will be at 7:00 PM here at the BHS Little Theater.
All in favor?
Second.
Second.
Oops, sorry, second.
Second.
Okay, so it was probably?
I just have one question.
One moment. Motion's been made by Mrs. Mendez. It's been properly seconded by Mr. Rodriguez. Before your question, all in favor?
Well, I can't until I ask the question.
Okay, so much a question, Mrs. Sullivan.
This is just for this year to change it?
Every year, this, the first day of school, who knows next year, Mrs. Sullivan? I'm not sure.
Well, no, my question was, this is just for this year?
It's for, it's just for this year. Next year is a whole new.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Okay. All in favor? Unanimous? Okay, so our next meeting will be Wednesday, September 2nd, at 7:00 PM in the Little Theater. I'm sorry, September 7th, 7th, in the Little Theater. So anything else under new business? Okay, I did want to make a quick comment, so for those that have been following, I just wanted to publicly thank Cradles to Crayons. I know everybody loves when I talk about them. So they are amazing, and thank you to BPS staff. Thank you to Counselor Shirley Azak, my sister, my niece Alexandra Yunis, Georgina Yunis, my mom. A special thank you to Kelly Hanlon and Linda Petrentonio. I always underestimate things, and the first day that our backpacks, 2,500 backpacks were delivered, I thought I could do it by myself with the custodian. So these two ladies showed up a week before, and I don't know how we did it, but with their help, we were able to get the majority of them. And the day of, they were amazing. And I can always turn to them, and I just want to give them a special thank you. They're always there. I don't even have to ask. They always show up and they always help out. But we've had Jason, our BHS custodian. We have, Mr. Rodriguez showed up and helped me direct traffic. We had Nancy Tucker from the Yellow IRC and her group of volunteers, and Special Volunteer Mo, one of our students. Sergeant Livingston. This is what makes what we do so worth it. Seeing our officer high-fiving, smiling, interacting with our students, that's what we need. Our students have seen them, and it just, it was amazing, and we all had such an amazing day. And to have our officer interact with them on such a, you know, handing our backpacks, you know, it just, it's, they're building relationships with our students. Mayor Sullivan and his team from the, I almost said the White House, from the mayor's office, showed up with his team helping out. We had Senator Brady, Lisa Peterson, Nancy Herman Centers, Lisa Early and her, I think she had the Boy Scouts with her. Gosh, there's a ton of people that had showed up. So I'm going to publicly, you know, post a list of all the volunteers, but I just wanted to just thank them. If I forgot anybody, I apologize. There was just so many people. And it was amazing to see so many people just show up and want to help out. And our next one is the winter coats, our winter coats. So I'm just going to ask here, we have a need for the high school level, our larger sizes, for the older, older students. And for those that want to help out or can donate, reach out to your, you know, your companies. I can't do certain things as a public official, but, you know, there's such a need, and they appreciate it. And we have such a great group in Brockton, and this is what makes us, again, the city of champions. We've heard that a few times tonight. I'm proud. This is, this is my city. And seeing everybody get together to give out 2,500 backpacks was pretty amazing. So thank you to my little volunteers. I appreciate everyone. Mrs. Mendez?
I just want to add that on that same day, on August 11th, there was a public forum, Respect Our Voices, that was with the Sabuda and the Students Ambassador and the Youth School Liberation. I know Sharon Walder went to represent Mr. Thomas, and it was a great conversation, really seeing youth being empowered, especially students, concerns that they brought. It would be great to have more collaboration with others that weren't able to be there to answer some questions or give some clearly clarity or transparency on some of the requests that they have that necessarily, they were, in a sense, road blockers just because of how legally things occur in our district, which, you know, for many of us makes sense, how we protect our educators, et cetera. But I just thought it was great to see youth being empowered and really using their voice and using that platform to speak about concerns that they have and, and just requesting, especially things like, you know, being part of the evaluation process, which we know that's a huge legal part. But also, like, being part of the handbook and, like, bringing that voice in and wanting that. It just shows ownership, and I think when students have ownership, that's our biggest purpose, right? To make sure that it's a success for them and their families. So just want to give a shout out to our community partners, for sure.
Thank you. Definitely. It was the same day, so I had replied. I wasn't able to attend because we had the big backpack giveaway, but a few, a few members that had showed up were there, and I believe you were there as well. So it's always great to, we always get invitations for different events throughout our city. You know, it doesn't hurt. Reach out to us. Invite us to your events. Invite us to the school events if you have things going on. You know, it's good to get us involved because then we can see what our students and our families need. Because I always tell everybody, we're their, we're their voice at this table. We're here for them. And if we don't know what's going on, we can't reach out to them or give them information. So it's the last meeting before school starts. And I'm sure my fellow school committee members and myself want to wish everybody a happy, amazing 2022, 2023 year, school year, and we will be thinking of everybody. And if there's anything anyone else wanted to say, but I mean, it's, I'm excited. I'm seeing a lot of, a lot of positive changes, and we're excited. It's kind of like our first normal year in two years, so we don't want to jinx it, but, and yeah, three years. So it's kind of our first normal year. So, but we're excited, excited. If anyone else has anything? Otherwise, we are going to be going into executive session. So the school committee will go into executive session pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A, A3, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining. Brockton Education Association, BEA, Brockton Education Paraprofessional Association, BEPA, Monitor Teacher Assistance, MTAs, Transportation, School Bus Drivers, Teamsters Unit. So we will be going into executive session once we adjourn, and we will not be returning. Okay? Can I get a motion?
Motion to go into executive session.
Oh, there's no hearing of visitors, but I can talk to you afterwards? Okay. Sorry. What, what was the motion to go into executive session by Mrs. Sullivan, seconded by Mr. Sullivan? All in favor? Unanimous? Meeting adjourned?